Because if you see one of these babies rolling down your street, something's going on and you need to be prepared. Thanks for watching Aging Well in L.A.
Hi, I'm Shannon Lamerk Park. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
In L.A. this week...
International passengers can now scan their way into L.A. I'm Yana Kay. The details next.
I'm Anna Marcos, a community marcher together to stop the violence on the streets of South L.A. That's coming up.
Within the next several years, California is expected to have more than 4 million drivers aged 65 and older. But when is the right time to hand over the keys, if there is such a time? I'm Gil Reyes at a forum hosted by CHP senior volunteers like my friend here, Marlene, and I'll have that story next.
Hello and welcome to L.A. this week. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. Some international passengers and American citizens going through U.S. Customs can now expect an easier entry thanks to new self-service kiosks at the Tom Bradley International Terminal. Yana Kay explains.
By using these new automated passport control kiosks at the Tom Bradley International Terminal, U.S. and Canadian citizens are able to cut the amount of time they spend with a Customs and Border Patrol officer.
It's nice, very nice. It's gonna be a time saver and it was easy.
Airport and city officials gathered at the terminal recently to unveil 40 new kiosks, allowing travelers to electronically submit their customs declaration form and biographic information, reducing lines and processing times.
Our residents and visitors can be out the door faster. They can be, if they're visiting this town, spending money in our economy, or if they live here, they can be home that much quicker.
Single travelers can complete the entire process under two minutes, while a family of three can finish in about four minutes. On average, U.S. citizens are cutting their wait times by 18 minutes.
The kiosks feature a touchscreen interface and are pretty easy to use. After you select your language and answer a few questions, all you have to do is slide in your passport and then follow the simple step-by-step instructions.
The kiosks remove the paperwork part of the job for U.S. Customs agents, allowing them to focus primarily on verifying the purpose of travel.
In the second week, we almost processed 800 passengers in one hour on the 40 machines. So it's very exciting.
U.S. Customs and Border officials say these kiosks enhance the passenger experience while still maintaining the same level of security.
These kiosks interface with our law enforcement databases. It's the same as if you were in front of an officer at a booth. So again, there is no compromise to security.
Travelers using the kiosks will no longer have to fill out a paper customs declaration form. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. this week.
LAX officials are also planning to install the kiosks in Terminal 2, the airport's secondary international terminal. Some of the lowest-paid hotel workers in our city can expect a big pay raise starting next July. But not everyone supports the pay hike. Gil Reyes brings us both sides of the debate.
On one side of the room, organized labor, sitting alongside yellow-shirted hotel workers in this packed city committee meeting. They say raising their wages will help boost L.A.'s economy.
When they could provide basic living needs for their families, they're gonna also spend that in their local communities.
But on the other side of the coin, business groups, wearing suits and ties. They say previous pay hikes in L.A. and Long Beach forced hotels to cut staff.
These ordinance resulted in a pay increase and a loss of jobs. That's what our city can expect if this ordinance is passed.
The deal would raise the minimum wage at large hotels like the Ace Hotel in downtown Los Angeles to $15.37 an hour. Opponents of the measure criticized members of the L.A. City Council for what they called "rushing the measure to a vote", just 48 hours after an environmental impact report was released weighing the pros and the cons.
We just need a little more time to make sure we make the right decision.
One of the questions is, why target the hotel industry? Supporters say, since the city of L.A. experienced record-breaking tourism in recent years, L.A. hotels can afford to pay workers more. But others aren't so sure. Citing 2008's wage increase at hotels near LAX, a beacon economic study discovered layoffs soon followed.
Do we need to do something about wages in L.A.? Absolutely. Is this the appropriate solution? I'm not sure. I feel like we're aiming at the wrong target.
Still, the city council's Economic Development Committee approved the pay increase to help families.
The majority of the hotel industry employees are women, women of color. Forty-three percent of them live, you know, below the poverty line.
Sometimes you need to do just what you feel is right. And for me, this is right.
Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
That vote resulted in 12 council members supporting a living wage increase and three council members against it. The mayor has promised to sign it. In light of recent news on domestic violence and the NFL, city officials are raising awareness and encouraging Angelenos to work together to bring an end to this violence. Yana Kay reports.
This film, Telling Amy's Story, exposes something that usually happens behind closed doors: domestic violence. Here in Los Angeles, officials want to bring it out in the open. They say the number of family violence incidents continues to rise. Los Angeles City Attorney Mike Fuer and Los Angeles Police Chief Charlie Beck addressed how residents can work together to end domestic violence. But first, Fuer spoke directly to victims and survivors.
You are not alone. There is a team prepared to help you.
Fuer said that if you are a victim of domestic violence, call 911 immediately. Trained professionals are available to help. He said that his office has a prosecutor, victim specialist, and investigators working together.
To fight for the victim, to protect the victim, and to assure that we do everything possible... The chief mentioned something very important. There is a family often involved in this. Everything possible to be sensitive to the needs of that family.
Currently, the city attorney's office reviews 200 family violence cases a week. That translates to 11,000 cases each year. Chief Beck said that over the last decade, overall crime in the city has gone down. But the incidence of domestic violence has escalated by 18% this year alone.
Domestic violence doesn't occur in a vacuum. It is connected to spousal abuse. It is connected to child abuse. It is something that the neighbors become aware of. It is something that the schools become aware of. It is something that all of us can reach out, make a call, and make a difference.
Beck said that children who witnessed domestic violence are more likely to engage in the same type of behavior as adults. That's why the cycle needs to end now, and it begins by calling the police. Officials are also working on enforcing a law prohibiting domestic abusers from owning guns. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. this week.
The city attorney is also organizing a team of youth leaders later this year to discuss domestic violence. Anyone who is involved in a domestic abuse situation can call 1-800-978-3700 to get help. And whether it's domestic violence or street violence, hundreds of South L.A. residents say enough is enough. And in a show of solidarity, residents took to their streets side by side with LAPD officers to take back their neighborhoods. Here's Anna Marcos with more.
It's a community learning to come together with its different ethnicities and points of view. And it's clear at this rally and march in South L.A. that they are definitely together in fighting gang and gun violence on their streets.
We gathered here today to say no more. We sick and tired and been sick and tired of our kids dying in the streets.
Peace isn't just for one day, okay?
I mean this march because I just wanna stop bullying, make people be friends.
If everybody comes to march or stops the violence, then we all have peace. That is why I am part of this march.
The Anti-Violence March is the brainchild of the Vermont-Manchester Collaborative, a group of some 50 community groups along the South Vermont corridor. And they are teaming up with police.
We are not only interested in investigating homicide. We are very much interested in preventing homicide.
I have tremendous hope in what has happened in the last six months in South L.A. With violence reduction, business comes in, jobs come in.
I was part of the problem, but I'm also part of the solution. I was a gang member out there in the streets.
Some march for jobs, some march for better police protection, some march to get the community involved, while others are here just to honor their loved ones who they lost to gun violence.
This is my son, my baby, 16 years old. He got killed, a gang violent. A boy tried to force him to a gang and they killed him because he didn't want a gang bang.
Organizers are also asking city leaders for help in improving the community and bringing in more playgrounds and recreation programs.
The community is crying for help.
I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The number of homicides has gone down in the area. Police cite the Jordan Downs Housing Development as a major success. It has not seen a single homicide in the last three years. Fire crews have finished mop-up operations and port business has resumed after a fire ravaged San Pedro Pier and Warehouse. Anna Marcos has more on the aftermath of a blaze that could have caused critical damage to the port.
It's full steam ahead at the Catalina Freight Line, the company that brings Catalina Island its supplies. The crates of tomatoes and other necessities are moving again. But it was a different story last week when fire broke out at the Pasha Terminal across the water. Luckily, it started after hours. By next morning, most businesses were reopened, even if a bit later than usual.
It could shut us down completely, of course, because we won't be able to get out.
But it took two days to contain the fire and hundreds of workers were sent home, while the residents were asked to stay indoors due to poor air quality. Fireboats, choppers, and rescue divers fought the blaze from the ground, the air, and from underwater. The flames started in the wood beams under a wharf. The warehouse above it housed heavy steel products, and some fell through, making it very dangerous for rescue divers.
It's going to be very loud and very dark. Your visibility is going to be very low. So you have to use a lot of your instincts for diving to deploy these floats. Absolutely, because if the dock is deteriorating, we have stuff falling on us.
The fire may have been a small blip on the radar screen for most businesses here, but many know that a bigger blaze could have been devastating in an area that handles 40% of the nation's import cargo. Meanwhile, firefighters lost much of their diving equipment fighting the blaze.
We lost up to about close to $30,000. But the upscale on that is we kept the port open. They make millions of dollars here every day. And we stopped the fire from spreading.
So far, no estimates on fire damage or economic impact. But those who live and work here know it could have been a lot worse. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
And in this weekend, tweets, city leaders took to Twitter to thank fire officials for their quick action to put out the fire at the port. The mayor's own personal Twitter account, @EricGarcetti, tweeted, "Congrats to LAFD and LAFD chief for incredible work at the port tonight. Due to their heroic work, port operations won't be interrupted." Councilman Joe Bustagno, who represents the port area, tweeted, "Great work, LAFD, containing tonight's fire on the Wilmington waterfront. Thankfully, no injuries." The Port of L.A. was also in a thankful mood, tweeting, "Another round of thanks to our Long Beach neighbors, Port of Long Beach, Long Beach FD, for helping us put out the birth 177 fire." After 25 years in Lincoln Heights, the District Office of Council District 1 has officially moved. Gil Reyes reports from the grand opening of its new location.
Dancing in the streets of Highland Park, people celebrated the kickoff of L.A.'s Latin Jazz Music Festival, also the opening of government offices so close they could walk there.
We haven't had a council office in Highland Park, I don't think, ever. So I'm really proud that the office is here, that we can just walk up and ask the questions, talk to who we need to talk to to get the issues resolved that we need to resolve in our community.
The District Office of Council District 1 officially opens at its new location in this former Masonic temple. The 91-year-old building in Highland Park is on the National Registry of Historic Places. The opening took place a year late because of problems with the building's windows. See them on the top left of your screen? Oh, they look great now, restored to their original look, a mosaic of mini glass panels. But here's how the windows looked last year, the miniature squares removed by the owner. This didn't work well for L.A.'s preservation officials, so they ordered the original look back with refurbished windows.
$15,000 to $20,000 of craftsmanship because we believe in recognizing our traditions and our history, but we also believe in looking forward to a great future.
Some residents in the former Lincoln Heights location are disappointed by the move a few miles north. But Area Councilman Gil Sadio says the new office will provide better access and visibility for constituents throughout his district.
Everyone will be represented. Every voice will be heard.
At the new Council District 1 office on Figueroa Street in Highland Park, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The building, built in 1923, once stood as a lodge for the free and accepted masons for 60 years. And you just heard mention of Councilman Sadio's inaugural Latin Jazz Festival. Yana Kay takes us to the event celebrating music and community.
The smooth and soulful sounds of Latin jazz fill the air, getting everyone on their feet as they hit the dance floor.
Music is wonderful, yeah.
The music is part of the very first Latin Jazz and Music Festival held at Sycamore Grove Park in Highland Park. The two-day event was put on by Councilmember Gil Sadio.
This is part of what I talked about in my campaign, about creating a community, taking advantage of the fact that in the Northeast, it's a very artistic, bohemian community, a lot of talent. And so we wanted to create venues for them, and that's what we're doing.
And more than 14 bands took the opportunity to perform for the crowd and showcase their talents.
This event is fantastic. I mean, really, just to have all these great musicians come together and just perform for a community, it's just something really beautiful to see.
The crowd got to show off some of their own dance talents as they moved to the rhythm and sounds of the music.
I love the Latin music in general, so I'm just here to enjoy the music and enjoy the day and enjoy, you know, a night out with family.
A combination that's hard to beat. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. this week.
Jews around the world recently observed Rosh Hashanah, a two-day holiday marking the Jewish New Year. Gil Reyes reports from a special ceremony at L.A. City Hall.
Blowing of the shofar, or ram's horn, ushers in the year 5775 for the Jewish people. But Rosh Hashanah is also a time to reflect deeply on the past year, a notable one for Jewish West Side Councilman Paul Coretts.
Because I overcame my fear of flying and finally traveled to Israel for the first time.
And that we can come together as a city, as a community, as a nation, to do whatever is necessary to make sure that our country and our community is better than it was the year before.
In case you were counting, at one point, the city of L.A. had six Jewish members on the L.A. City Council. Now it is down to three. The city's top three elected officials, however, do happen to be Jewish. They are, of course, the city controller, the city attorney, and of course, the mayor. Quoting from the Old Testament, Northridge Area Councilman Mitchell Englander reminds fellow Jews to share with the poor. Colleagues say they look forward to the future.
That offers the promise of bringing us closer together, offers the promise of all of us reaching out and lifting up everybody in our city.
We need to make our communities better. We need to make our districts better. We need to make ourselves better.
At City Hall, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Rosh Hashanah is the beginning of 10 days of awe for Jews around the world, leading to Yom Kippur, the Day of Atonement. The federal government has given California the green light for the design of its driver licenses for undocumented immigrants. A downtown dog park reopens and a new exhibit at LAX shines the spotlight on Latinos in Hollywood. These stories and more in City Beat. The Department of Homeland Security has approved the design for the California Driver's License for Undocumented Immigrants. The new design will have the phrase "federal limits apply" on the front of the card in the upper right-hand corner. In response, L.A. Councilman Gil Sadio released a statement saying, quote, "I look forward to seeing the California Department of Motor Vehicles implement the new design so that over a million motorists in California will make our highways safe and secure." The LAPD continues its efforts to incorporate small libraries within its community police stations with the unveiling of this little free library inside the LAPD Southeast Area Police Station on South 108th Street.
Right now, we have a lot of kids that come here and they just walk in to say hi. We've tried to change the culture of the officers of this station. We've tried to change the relationship between the community and the police.
In its most basic form, little free libraries, which can be located online via a registry, are a place where people can pick up a book or contribute a book, no library cards necessary. The Los Angeles Downtown Arts District Dog Park on 4th Street recently celebrated its grand reopening with a big party. Improvements at the park, also called Sasslow Dog Park, include a new mural by a graffiti artist. Councilmember Jose Wezar, who represents downtown, also attended the ribbon cutting.
It's a gift to the neighborhood. We're loving it.
It's definitely nice for them to have a place where they can meet other dogs in an enclosed space where they're safe.
While the land is being loaned to the community by the city, the park is not operated by the city. Those behind the effort are asking the public to donate to cover operational costs by purchasing stainless steel dog bone plaques, which will feature the name of the donor and a brief message. The Latinos in Hollywood photo exhibit has been unveiled at LAX Terminal 4 in celebration of Latino Heritage Month. As an estimated 14,000-plus travelers move through LAX each day, the exhibit will offer them a glimpse into what Latinos have contributed to L.A.'s entertainment past and present. Included are images of icons of years past, such as Rita Hayworth, Desi Arnaz, and Anthony Quinn, alongside present-day stars Rita Moreno, Hector Elizondo, Eva Longoria, and Zoe Saldana, among others. The CHP is working with senior citizens to help them with their driving skills as they get older. Gil Reyes reports on the Age Well Drive Smart program hosted by the Office of Councilman Bob Blumenfield.
The test begins for the senior drivers evaluating their reaction time. The goal: to connect as many of these sporadically placed numbers in order using a pen. You have 10 seconds. Connect 10 or more numbers, and your reflexes are good. Connect five or fewer numbers, and you may want to consider handing over the keys.
It makes you like, oh, boy, I'm not as good as I thought I was.
The test, part of this Age Well Drive Smart seminar hosted by CHP senior volunteers. Students receive this free Senior Drivers Manual sanctioned by the CHP. It contains the test and self-assessment questionnaires about confidence at intersections, trouble when making turns, and the like.
We're not coming in saying, you can't drive anymore. We're letting them make the decision.
Rules are neither the DMV nor law enforcement can revoke your license based on your age. So it's up to you and your family to decide when's the right time to stop or limit driving. When confronting an aging parent, sensitivity is needed. Patricia Claude likes that she can take the test home and in private.
Because you can do it on your own. You don't have anybody else asking you about it.
The District Office of Councilman Bob Blumenfield hosted the seminar, knowing by the year 2020, California will be home to over 4 million drivers aged 65 or older.
As I get up there, I'm actually thinking about what we need to be safe drivers. So we just thought it was a great opportunity for our surrounding neighbors to use this great site we have here.
The best way to receive one of these informative booklets is to book an Age Well Drive Smart Symposium at your local church or other organization. You can do that best by contacting the number at the bottom of your screen, 1-818-888-0980, extension 225. In recita, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Despite well-placed concern for elderly drivers, studies show seniors are actually responsible for fewer accidents than teenagers and drunk drivers. An eclectic art gathering in Elysian Park had everything you could possibly ask for. Oil paintings, hula hoops, and the LA River were all on the agenda for the ninth annual Frog Town Art Walk. Anna Marcos takes us there.
The name is as whimsical as the art event itself. The Frog Town Art Walk celebrated its ninth annual show. And what a setting, right along the LA River at Elysian Park. Among the star attractions, this new installation of kinetic art. Yep, art that moves.
I've been involved since the very beginning, when I was on staff of the 13th District before I was elected. And I've seen it grow from just a few street segments late at night to this, an event that starts at about 5 o'clock and runs into the wee hours. And it involves the entire community now, not just the artists who live here.
The artists and artisans of this art community opened their studios and pop-up galleries to any and all visitors for free. There was even a chalk walk for those called to express the artist in all of us. And a little kinetic moving art never hurts either. Hula hoop, anyone? Music, multimedia performances, art, poetry, nature, and lots of people to share it with. All in all, a perfect summer night. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
In this week's list of things to do, kids learning to make their own puppets, cleaning up the beach, and a public star party. It's not your typical arts and crafts class. On Saturday, October 4th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., the Puppet School at 13440 Ventura Boulevard Suite 108 in Sherman Oaks will hold a two-hour workshop teaching kids step-by-step how to trace, cut, hot glue, and decorate their own puppets, all under the supervision of talented and friendly builders. Parents are invited to the last 30 minutes to watch your kids perform with their new friends. The class is designed for kids ages 5 to 11 years old. For more information, go to puppetschool.com. On the first Saturday of each month, and in October, that falls on October 4th, join Cabrillo Marine Aquarium educators and volunteers from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. as they maintain the Cabrillo Native Garden and learn about its plant and animal inhabitants. Also, join other volunteers in a beach cleanup clearing the shore of marine debris. Groups are required to make reservations by the Thursday before the event. The aquarium is located at 3720 Stephen M. White Drive in San Pedro. Go to cabriomarineaquarium.org for details. Seeing stars isn't difficult in Los Angeles, especially if you're talking about the kind that's up in the sky. The Griffith Observatory hosts free public star parties monthly from 2:00 to 9:45 p.m. with the assistance of volunteers from the Los Angeles Astronomical Society, the Los Angeles Sidewalk Astronomers, and the Planetary Society. The next star party will take place on Saturday, October 4th. The parties are a chance for the whole family to look at the sun, moon, visible planets, and other objects, to try out a variety of telescopes, and to talk to knowledgeable amateur astronomers about the sky and their equipment. The Griffith Observatory is located at 2800 East Observatory Road. Go to griffithobservatory.org for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Things are starting to cool down a bit now, but during the recent three-digit heat wave, visitors and the animals themselves got a chance to stay cool at the zoo. Yana Kay reports.
Visitors to the L.A. Zoo are barely visible as they are drenched by this powerful stream of mist. This cool zone is just one of many chill-out spots located at the zoo to help visitors beat the heat.
It's a great idea. Javier is enjoying them very much. He loves the mist.
The misters are all part of the annual "It's Cool at the Zoo" event, giving visitors and animals a chance to cool off as temperatures hover above 100 degrees. Families enjoyed all sorts of activities. Kids got up close and personal with ice sculptures almost as big as they were. And for parents, as well as the kids, it was certainly a favorite chill-out spot. Visitors also got to check out cool ice carving demonstrations. And the animals were not left out in the cold as they enjoyed frozen treats in the form of giant popsicles filled with their favorite foods. And with these misters at every turn, it certainly was cool at the zoo. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. this week.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Yeah, testing 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Can you guys hear me in the control room? Hey, thanks. Okay.
Good morning, good morning. It's glad for all of us to be out here in the Valley. It is Friday, October 3rd. Madam Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum. Could you call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonner, Busciano, Sodio, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar, Carrasco, Correia, Labash, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Wesson. Ten members present a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Labash moves, O'Farrell seconds, next.
Committal resolutions for approval.
Martinez moves, Blumenfield seconds. That leads us where?
Mr. President, do you wish to run through the agenda?
Let's do that.
Item 1 is an item known for public hearing. There are cards on that item.
Okay, why don't I just take up item 1 and we'll deal with the cards? I have Mr. Akala and Mr. Herman. Mr. Fuentes.
This will help, but I'd like to continue item 1A for two weeks.
We can do that without objection. We'll continue item 1A for two weeks. That brings us where on that item?
That's to October 17th.
Okay, Mr. Akala.
No, no. You don't have to take his cards.
Oh, he's 1A?
It's the only item.
Okay, well then, so then that item, I'm sorry, Mr. Akala, that'll be continued. So we now, what's the next item, Madam Clerk?
Item 2 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, members, item 2. Specials? Ms. Martinez would like to hold item 2, or would you like to just go through it right now? In fact, let us run through the agenda. What's the next item, Madam Clerk?
Items 3 and 4 are items which public hearings have not been held. Temples required for consideration.
So without objection, those items are now before us?
And there are cards on both items.
Okay, I'll take item 3. Mr. Akala and again, Mr. Herman.
Item 3, according to Mr. Welch, you have done a good job on making landlords comply with and fix violations because you withheld their rent from the tenants. But I still think you're doing a crappy job on providing housing for everyone. So all these people got off your payroll, your list of, your blacklist. But the rest of the people, we are all on your blacklist. You will take everything we have if we let you. That's why we come here and speak. And we don't speak against you, we speak against the things you're doing to us. All those illegal tickets, all those illegal parking violations, all those throwaway your cars, throwaway your life. That's the item. Stop messing with the people. There are some young people here, or I would say, go fuck yourself.
Yeah, you did say it. All right, so Mr. Herman? He's a great example.
We're talking about item 3, resolutions to relative removing of various properties from the rent escrow. At some point in our nature, the city has done a portion of excellent on that issue. But it still falls in the hands of what you've done regarding liens, the illegal process of that. But good people do not need laws to tell them to act or behave responsibly under rent escrow because we all wish to live in a home that is clean, safe, under rent escrow programs and services, while the bad and dishonest will of the city will find a way to violate the laws and put people out of their rent escrow homes for citations and violations rather than working with you. The children in the background are finding out the truth, that many of the laws by the lien process of the rent escrow violate our first constitutional right when we come here to protest, protest rent escrow, when it is illegally done without the appropriate action of the laws by the city attorney, Mike Fuer. Mike Fuer. And then again, adopt accompanying resolutions removing the following properties from the rent escrow called REAP, R-E-A-P, inasmuch as the owners have caused the city to reap, or as I call it, strip you and your violations and provide it. So if you want to show proof that you're not violating the city's ordinance, come to City Hall, protest against the rent escrows if they're bad against you, if they're liens against you, protest. They'll get washed away. You no longer have to be homeless or on the street because a rent escrow discriminates against people who are wanting to live throughout Los Angeles, in the Valley, without prostitution.
Thank you, thank you very much. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Fuentes, it's my understanding you have a presentation. Are you ready, sir?
I am.
Then the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Wesson. I'd also like to invite my colleagues, Blumenfield and Martinez, to join me as we recognize October as National Down Syndrome Awareness Month. One in every 691 babies in the United States is born with Down Syndrome and occurs in people of all races and economic levels. People with Down Syndrome experience cognitive delays, but the effect is usually mild to moderate and is not indicative of the many strengths and talents that each individual possesses. This year marks a special milestone for the Down Syndrome Association of Los Angeles as they are getting ready to celebrate the 20th Annual Buddy Walk on October 18th at City Hall. This is the second time in the organization's history that the Buddy Walk will be held in this great city. Last year, more than 1,700 people participated in the Buddy Walk at City Hall to celebrate the many incredible talents of our community members with Down Syndrome. The efforts of this organization and Buddy Walk would not be possible without the help of some very key people standing here with us today, and I want to take some time to acknowledge them now. With us here is the Director of Administration of Development for the Down Syndrome Association of Los Angeles, Jim Hodgson, and we're going to ask him to give some remarks as soon as Ms. Martinez and Mr. Blumenfield do so. Bob?
Everyone, come, come on. Everyone, thank you very much, Mr. Fuentes. I'm so proud to stand with my colleagues and encourage everyone to join this year's Buddy Walk, which will once again take place around City Hall downtown Los Angeles. This walk symbolizes not only the strength of the Down Syndrome Association members, but also the wonderful partnership with the city of Los Angeles. From the Buddy Walk to the wonderful facilities we have in Council District 6, I believe our partnership has created great things. I encourage everyone to join this year and help us increase the number of teams that walk in this year's Buddy Walk. Thank you very much.
I want to add my voice to this issue and to thank Councilmember Fuentes for bringing this forward. You know, for over 35 years, Down Syndrome Awareness Association of Los Angeles has really been successful in fulfilling its mission. And I'm very excited here, not only to be part of this, but because students from Leachman Special Education Center are here with us in council, from my district in Reseda. We've got great students here from Leachman. Let's give it up for the students from Leachman. Let's give it up for the students from Leachman. Leachman, they're a public education center serving students in grades six through 12 in Reseda, within walking distance of my district office. They're, they're going to be part of the, the presentation on the Buddy Walk on October 18th. The Buddy Walk, which was established in 1995 by the National Down Syndrome Society to celebrate Down Syndrome Awareness Month. And it promotes acceptance and inclusion of people with Down Syndrome. In the 12 months since we last got gathered here at the Buddy Walk at City Hall, the DSLA, DSALA, they've done multiple things. They provided, they free and affordable services for speech and language classes, reading, monthly Saturday seminars, yoga, hip hop dance, new family barbecue, basketball camps, four locations. They've really do a tremendous amount. So I want to thank, thank the association for all it's done. Thank Felipe Fuentes, also Yolanda Fuentes, should be praised for bringing the Buddy Walk to City Hall. She's the district director to Councilmember Fuentes. And I know she's here with her daughter Estella as well. So I'm thrilled to be part of this and this is, this is a really inspiring and important time. So thank you.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. I'm Jim Hodgson, the Director of the Down Syndrome Association of Los Angeles. I'd also like to introduce my friend here and co-director, Sandra Baker. She oversees our Spanish language divisions throughout the city. Thank you for having us today. We were here last year talking about an event that was about to happen. The event ended up being incredibly successful. I want to thank you for your support. We are having it again on October 18th. We're going to have anywhere from 1,500 to 2,000 individuals from all districts, celebrating, acknowledging, and in honor of those that have Down Syndrome. We'd love to have your support this year. And I'd like to tell you about one special thing that we're going to do along with all the cool stuff we do. We're going to have Jamie Brewer, who's an actress from American Horror Story. Jamie has Down Syndrome. We have friends coming out from the National Down Syndrome Society, acknowledging the growth that we're doing. But also, the East Coast are seeing these images of our City Hall with our community on the steps of them. And it started to make some really positive waves. But one thing we're going to do is, last year I introduced Angela Armenta, who was one of the first women in history to complete the LA Marathon. Angela also has Down Syndrome. Angela's going to be joining us. We have a small team of similar athletes that have completed the LA Marathons. And Jimmy Jensen completed the New York Marathon this year. And we'll be having an event called the 21 Fun Run. And what, that's going to happen before Buddy Walk, but that is this group of elite athletes going around City Hall 20 times. And then for the symbolic 21st time, all 1,500 to 2,000 people joined at City Hall will join this team for the completion of the 21st loop around the City Hall. And the 21st chromosome is a very important chromosome to our community. And that's why the number 21 is at the base of this event. So thank you all. Felipe? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Let's give him a big round of applause, colleagues. And although Councilmember Buzcaino is not here today, he's been a tremendous supporter of the Buddy Walk last year and this year, and I want to make a special notice of that. But September 18th, well, Yolanda, what time are folks going to start on September 18th?
11 a.m.
11 a.m., September 18th, colleagues. Join us out there at City Hall. It's an amazing, amazing event. And with that, we want to give a presentation and a resolution.
If I may, Mr. Labange, you wanted to add on?
I just want to rise to salute my colleagues, Mr. Fuentes, Ms. Martinez, always, for all the greatness of you, Mr. Blumenfeld. To the young people, it's so great to walk and it's walking around City Hall. And if there's any way possible, only because I pitched this, if we could have the express elevators after the walk, get to the top of the Tom Bradley Tower. I, I volunteer all my office staff to assist in any way. Because once you get to the top of Tom Bradley Tower, the top of City Hall, you're closer to the stars and you're all stars for being in the Buddy Walk. Good job, council members, good job.
Back to you, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Weston. Thank you, Mr. Labange. We are very excited about the Buddy Walk. As we mentioned, it's the second time we've brought it back to City Hall. So this is a very important thing for Los Angeles and for the Down Syndrome Association of the great city of Los Angeles. So with that, we've got a presentation, Jim, that we want to make. It's a beautiful resolution.
It is beautiful.
And who wants to take a photo with us?
Yes.
Photo, you guys want to take picture? All right, we'll take a photo. Colleagues, one more round of applause. Thank you.
Would you like to photo, take a picture?
I'm going to take a couple of our general public comment cards. A minute each. Mr. Herman and Donna Garath. Or I could have pronounced that last name wrong. So, Mr. Herman, please come to the podium. General public comment. Followed by Donna. And the last name begins with a G. And Mr. Akala, yes, sir?
The performance of all 15 members of this council speaking at a public meeting, even to criticize a politician, is not a disruptive action. Rather, it is a right. And I possess that right today. A right to speak and challenge and abate against any of your decisions for you only take the wrong apprehensive actions to the citizens of Los Angeles and every Angelino. And yes, you put on a great puppet show, a pony show, as I call it, for our children. But give them a good education. I want every child here with Down Syndrome to walk away by the age of 18 to be able to read second grade and better write their mama letters saying, "Thank you for not having LUSD do this to me." But again, the critical speculative code of conduct is accountability, transparency, and openness by the standards of good government that enhance public trust.
Thank you, thank you. Your time is up, your time is up. Your time is up. Sergeants, help him understand. You're causing a disruption now. Okay, yeah, that's what I said. Your time is up, Mr. Akala. No, mi, um, Donna. Oh, I'm sorry, Donna, I didn't make it out.
Hello, I'm Donna Garcetti.
Yes.
Anyway, bring back video conferencing. There's a lot of people interested. In my opinion, Obama should be impeached or we can let him resign. Let Biden take over. Bottom, uh, Obama took out all the troops in Iraq even though he, uh, even though he was warned of the consequences of that action. And let us all, and let us in a lurch when he left. We bombed and left Libya. Did not protect the border of Syria either. When he, uh, he left, he should have left some troops out. Uh, the commander tells you, you should, you should let the commander tell you when it's safe to do so. Don't take all, one regime and leave before you replace it. So ISIS came in and filled in the void. This was a war, we were winning at the end. But now because we were fighting and, uh, but because we left, ISIS gets too, uh, ISIS came in, it would be too big to control. Uh, Gates, President Bush, anyway, they said, don't leave, leave that troop behind.
Thank you, Mr. Akala, followed by Marion Fogler. Start his time.
You kept calling me and these guys kept sitting me down.
Just go on and speak.
Yeah, I'm speaking. I'm saying, why are they sitting me down when you called me? I don't understand these Nazi cops, okay? Excuse me. Uh, we live in a stupid society ruled by people without an education, telling the people with education what to do. It is an upside down cake here. You know what I mean? Do you know what I mean, city council? Are you talking, Mr. Weezer and Fuentes? What the hell are you talking about? You're not listening.
He should direct his comments to the full council.
Yeah, the full council, please listen. The general public wants a lot more than what you're giving us. You're taking too much from us. Go take something from your mama.
Yeah. We will pray for you, Mr. Akala. Marion Fogler.
It's not enough time, one minute. And I know why you're doing that because you don't want to have, let us have the First Amendment because you're taking away our Second Amendment. You're eroding away the, the U.S. Constitution because Obama, he's also eroding, taking away the military's rights. He wants to make them war criminals. He wants to pass a law at the UN that if they go to war, they're going to be prosecuted if they do something wrong. Number two, he wants to hire illegals for our military without regards of checking backgrounds or anything in case of this Ebola crisis outbreak in Texas. This is the same kind of thing that's happening with this. He needs to be removed by, by impeachment, whatever it takes. He's not worthy of being president and should have been Montell Williams, being the first American black. Because he's standing up for the, the, uh, the Marine that's being incarcerated right now in Mexico. And the, and Obama's not doing nothing. He's not even picking up a phone.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Okay, I'm going to do one more general public comment card. We'll go back. Mr. Gus, Daniel?
Good morning, council members. So we finally got cameras into the kill rooms of your shelters. And thank you to Handle in the Morning on KFI for retweeting them this morning. So we basically have a pile of dead dogs in the freezer next to pigeons and kittens and Chihuahuas in pits and Great Danes. It's, it's just a mess. The city's humane laws are not being enforced. There's millions of dollars that's not being collected. And this is what happens. And I would invite all of the council members to join me on a kill day when these animals get the needle and they lose their lives while the city doesn't enforce its laws. We're going, we have a lot more photos and footage than this that we're going to get out there. You know, a few years ago, a shelter employee lost his job because instead of killing the dogs normally, he was killing them through their jugular and just saying, "Die already." David Zonizer wrote about that. Please enforce your humane laws so more of these images don't get out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gus. Okay, now we'll go, Ms. Martinez, item two.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today we are requesting that the city attorney's office prepare a draft ordinance that establishes regulations on vehicles for private sale on certain streets in Los Angeles, particularly in the community of Arlita, and prohibit the parking of such vehicles with a for sale sign. Illegal vehicle sales has long been a problem on Van Nuys Boulevard, Osborne, and Woodman. Not only is it an eyesore, but it's also a safety hazard. These cars have created problems by taking up street parking, increased the trash on sidewalks in our streets, as well as have created relative, a relative sense of unsafe environment due to the cell's aggressive nature. It's unacceptable for our local residents to have to live with these types of conditions and feel threatened by people performing illegal commercial activities in our streets. I have introduced this motion after working with the Arlita community, which I know they're here. Can you stand up, please? Thank you very much for coming. I know you're, thank you very much for coming in for your support. And I ask for an i-vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Mr. Labange?
I just wanted to stand up. Brian Gallagher, DOT, stand up, Brian. Uh, and to the people of, uh, Ms. Martinez's district, you got the right person to get this done. This also is a safety issue because of heights of vehicles. And, uh, so I want to thank Ms. Martinez for your leadership there because all of us look at it, people are, are causing safety hazard and also the broken windows concept. But thank you, Ms. Martinez, for your leadership.
Okay, members, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Uh, Ms. Martinez, are you ready with your presentation?
Colleagues, today it gives me great pleasure. It gives me great pleasure to honor Van Nuys High School as they celebrate their 100th anniversary. Growing up in the Valley, I've seen Van Nuys High School change significantly over the time. We grew up learning that Marilyn Monroe and Paula Abdul and Robert Redford and Jane Russell all attended Van Nuys High School at one point. But for generations, uh, for a generation of teenagers across America, Van Nuys High School was the setting for some of their favorite TV shows and movies. So when teenagers watch Fast Times of Richmond High, the Ramones' classic rock and roll high school, or television shows such as Scrubs and Seventh Heaven, they were all filmed on the campus of Van Nuys High School. And while, Seventh Heaven, yes. And while the school was memorialized on the silver screen, it has also changed significantly throughout the years. And today, with special programs like math and science, medical, uh, medical studies, and the performing arts, art students are discovering a new program and how to excel in school. So it gives me a great pleasure to welcome our principal, Yolanda Gardaia, who's here with us, the Van Nuys student body president, David Ramirez, and Dr. Margaret Kim, Director of ESC North. Thank you very much for being here. And I want to welcome the principal of Van Nuys High School. And again, congratulations on 100 years, uh, in 100 years. And here's to another he, 100 years at Van Nuys High School. Thank you very much for coming.
We have a 100-year commemorative shirt for you. Um, I'd like to thank you all for taking your time to acknowledge us. On behalf of all the principals before myself and everyone, we've worked very hard. We've had the highest AP scores in LUSD this year, the highest pass rate. And we're continuing to be, it's a very big deal. It's a, a lot of hard work. And so we will continue to, to raise the level of education for every student. A wonderful example, our student body president here, who will be going to a four-year university and hopes to become a doctor. So we know that we're doing the right thing and we just need to do it more and harder for every single child. So thank you very much, Congress, um, next time, pretty soon, councilwoman. That'll be the next step, don't worry. And here, here's your.
Oh, thank you very much.
Mr. Labange, Ms. Martinez, Mr. Labange.
We got to send the principal back to civics class because you are, you got to, that's very good. Congratulations. I just, especially today with the start of the National League Playoff Cities, uh, series. Don Drysdale, number 53 in the program, number one in our hearts, the great Wolf from Van Nuys High. All right, go Wolves, go Wolves.
Again, thank you, Ms. Martinez. Give them another round of applause. I'd like to, uh, turn the floor over to Mr. Blumenfeld at this time.
Want to bring up the ladies here from the, uh, Women's Club? All right, we all here?
No, not yet. They're still coming.
I'm surrounded by grace and beauty. And I'm here, uh, we're here to celebrate the Canoga Park Women's Club. On October 30th, 1914, 16 ladies met to form the Women's Club of Owensmouth. Bylaws were drawn up, officers were elected, and one of the first decisions they made was to establish a free public library. With the energies of its new president, most active social leader, Mrs. Elsie Kimball, the club was able to announce the opening of the first library. In February 1931, the name of the community was changed to Canoga Park, and so was the club. It was renamed the Canoga Park Women's Club. And before the clubhouse was built in 1929 on Jordan Avenue, early meetings of the club were held in the homes of members in church buildings and school auditoriums. It was really a homespun group. And the club joined the California Federation of Women's Clubs in 1915. In 1923, they joined the General Federation of the Women's Club. Uh, and then they have done so much good in the community. They have helped and established support the community his- They have helped and established, supported the community historical museum in 1987. They organized the Canoga Owensmouth Historical Society in 1988. They established in 1966, they helped establish the Haven Hills, the first, the very first shelter in the San Fernando Valley for battered women and children. It really was a historic moment doing that, and it has helped spawn the movement in many ways. And so many, so many women and family have benefited because of the actions of these women, these leaders. The original organizers, they were of the Canoga Park Friends of Libraries in 1984. They continue to support library services. And also, I should say, every year, these wonderful women host several dinner events, from barbecue night to spaghetti night. And I can tell you firsthand that these are fantastic evening. The food is always delicious, the company is always great, and the mission is sincere. And it is, it is a wonderful group. I am proud that you are part of this third council district. I'm proud that you're part of the San Fernando Valley, that you're part of Los Angeles, you're part of what makes this city great. It is, it is the energy, it is the leadership that you put forward and the true caring that you have for community. And you help bring us all together. And therefore, we're going to recognize the Canoga Park Women's Club 100th Anniversary. That's a long time, and you've done a tremendous amount. And would you like to say a few words, Phalene? We have the president of the clubs.
Hi.
And we'll do the certificate in a moment.
Okay. I'm Phalene Harmon, and I'm the president of the Canoga Park Women's Club. And we are so honored today to be recognized by our councilman, Bob Bloomingfield, a third district, right?
Yeah.
And like he said, 16 of our ladies formed the Canoga Park Women's Club in 1914. And it has been a center for volunteer community service for 100 years. And you know what? It's just the beginning.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. And also, I would like to say that we are having a centennial celebration on October the 18th at our wonderful, old, quaint clubhouse that was built in 1929. And this coming Friday, it's just for members only, next Friday, where we had a cornerstone when the building was built, the cornerstone, and we have no idea what was in it. But we're going to open that cornerstone on October the 10th. So you know, I think it's gonna be a big surprise what we find in it, you know, so...
Maybe we should check it first.
No, I think my husband and another gentleman, a husband of one of our members, we're going to open it on the 9th, just to make sure that we can get it open. And we will check the items out. But I hope that you guys join us on October the 18th for our centennial. And you're all invited. And if you haven't checked out our old, quaint old building, come on by. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll certainly be there, and this is exciting, and we'll do a little photo here with the group. Let's give it up for the Canoga Park Women's Club.
Thank you and congratulations to all of you. Hey, Bob, are you gonna take some photos on the side? Well, no, whatever, I can call up and let you do your photos with them. Candido? Come on up. I'll hold it till you get there. All right.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. Candido, Mayor, Mr. Piper, we have a short time. Thank you for coming through the San Fernando Valley. One city, one people. Mr. Weezer, we were honored to work with you at this wonderful event, the Day of los braceros. You did a great job. Your staff did a great job. You have a wonderful staff. And we at the Food Bank and other groups were there to make the bags, etc., for your people. So we look forward to another four years of you serving this great city. Mr. President, I come before you again because three years ago today, we were before this council asking to honor a great hero in our community, Ms. Benavides. You've heard that name over and over again. The poor woman sits in her home with a broken heart because she was told it would happen. And I know Ms. Martinez is doing her best, but what does rec, and park have against this poor woman? This woman has lived her entire life in Van Nuys, who deserves to be here. And we're gonna be doing a documentary called Broken Promise, and it'll, basically, we'll follow the pain and suffering. This woman is an 80-year-old woman who has given a promise and it's been broken. We cannot allow that to happen, Mr. President. Injustice for one is injustice to all of us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Monica Alexinko, followed by Janine Nye, maybe?
Good morning.
Good morning to you.
I, I come before you this morning, as I have in the past, to ask for everyone's help to get rid of the blight that our community here in Van Nuys suffers with. This is about two hours' worth of my work, and I have pulled down this year so far more than 600 of these flyers. And I would remind everyone that there is a $300 fine that goes along with each one of these. And for a city that is in need of money, this is an obvious resource. So I will leave this with the clerk. Lastly, I would also ask that in Van Nuys, there be more of a focus on closing the illegal marijuana clinics. We are doing our best, but need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a Jean? Or, yes. Please, and pronounce your name. I'm sure I didn't do it justice.
My name is Jeannie Nye. I have a triplex. And once a year, I get a bill from the Housing Community Development Department. And the bill was, last year it was $203.49. My payment was late one day, just for one day, and the charge, the late charge is $370. And if you figure that out, the late charge is 181% of the original payment. And I'm asking you to amend this and make it 25%. It's the only fair thing to do. It's just, it's just injustice to all these people that have income property in the city of Los Angeles. If they have a late charge, just be fair. Be fair about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Maybe you could give, Jeannie, your address to the sergeant right there, and we'll try to direct it to the proper area, if you give it to him.
I do have a copy of the ordinance that...
Why don't you just give the name and number, and I'll try to have somebody contact you? Pick one of our sergeants.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I have a Daniel King? Or is it David? I see it now. Okay. Welcome, David.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, and thank you for your time. I'm here to speak in favor of a bill, a motion, 131374, which would ban the growing and selling of GMO plants in Los Angeles. I have petitions here that are still being circulated. Right now, we're at 2,773 signatures on this petition, which asks you to move forward and look at the ban to make Los Angeles a GMO-free zone. We believe that there is be no cost in jobs, that the adoption of this GMO-free ordinance would only enhance Los Angeles and enhance our economy, as well as enhancing the health of our citizens and the, especially those people that grow it on their own. I'd be happy to stay around after council meets and answer any questions you might have. We have 2,773 signatures from all over Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I want to, Mr. Bloomingfield, would you like to, again, and all of you public speakers, thank you for coming. I'd like to call on Mr. Bloomingfield for our last presentation of the day.
Get all the folks from Canoga Park High School up here. You know, great, great things come in threes sometimes, and we've had 200-year presentations so far. So this is gonna be the trifecta, the third 100-year presentation. Pretty amazing. We're here today celebrating the 100-year anniversary of Canoga Park High School. High School opened on October 4th, 1914 as the Owensmouth High School, and making it the oldest high school in the West San Fernando Valley. The school's name was changed in 1931 after the community of Owensmouth changed to Canoga Park, much like the Women's Club that we talked about. Now, Canoga Park sits right at the headwaters of the LA River. So what happens in Canoga Park just flows down through the entire city. It's an amazing place. It's, it's one of the only schools to have agricultural land and livestock actually on site. It's amazing. You're in a very urban area, and you go, you go visit the school, and you go, go to the back area, and they've got llamas and goats and pigs and sheep. What am I missing? And chickens. They've, and, and you think to yourself, how is this possible, right here in the middle of Canoga Park? And a horse? But it is. It is because of the legacy of this school, and they've maintained the character and the culture in so many different ways. And, and all of you are not strangers to Canoga Park High School. We had a number of folks from Canoga Park High School here in council about a year ago from the Future Farmers of America program. So they are, they're an amazing institution with a lot of history as well. The auditorium, which was built by President Franklin Delano Roosevelt's New Deal program, has hosted such famous people as Frank Sinatra and Martin Luther King. In a performance that rewarded the small, small high school for its efforts at selling war bonds, $40,000 in 1944 was a lot of money. Sinatra, along with Bob Hope, played for the students in 1946. On January 15th, 1961, another very historical moment, Martin Luther King took the stage at the auditorium. He urged community members to take a stand against racism in California and racial violence. And it was a precursor. Just shortly thereafter, he gave his famous "I Have a Dream" speech. I'd like to think that that speech was in some way inspired by, by his time at Canoga Park. There've been many notable graduates of Canoga Park High School, far too many to name over this 100 years, but there are a number that are particularly relevant to City Hall. Former council member Lloyd Davis, CD2. Council member Davis, Davis served as a council member from 1943 to 1951. Council member Robert Wilkinson from 1953 to 1957, and then again from 67 to 79. In fact, one of my own staff members, Eric Rodriguez, in the back there, no relation to Principal Rodriguez, also a product of Canoga Park High School. Many great people have come and continue to go through Canoga Park High School, and they do, they do amazing work. They're full of history, and we wanted to recognize this momentous 100-year anniversary. So here we have a number of folks with me. We've got Principal Rodriguez. We have the oldest alum of, of the school is here, Betty Allen. We have Brittany Perez, who's a cheerleader, Darius Jones, the captain of the football team, Alma Arias, the president of the student body, Darnell Taylor, a drum major. I'll let you guess which one is the drum major, given the outfits. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give it away, just a guess. Guess, and Mario Torres, the vice president of the student body. I'm gonna allow some of them to say a few, a few quick words. You wanna?
Marco.
Marco. Betty, so we're gonna first hear from, from Betty Allen, who is the oldest alum of Canoga Park High School, class of 1938, I believe. Pretty amazing.
Thank you. Thank you. I was, I was told to keep it really short, you know? So this is what is short. On behalf of Canoga Park High School, we are proud to accept this special centennial award. We thank you very much. Thank you.
Third-generation hunter.
This is Blanca, who is a third-generation Canoga Park hunter.
Hi, and good morning. My name is Blanca Rivera, and I'm very honored to be here today on this special celebration of Canoga Park High School and its 100 years of hunter pride. I'm here with Betty Allen, class of 1938, and also with Dr. Rodriguez, our principal, and to represent as a staff member, an alumni, class of 1986, as a third generation for Canoga Park High School. In behalf of my family and friends, who they also attended Canoga throughout the years of green and white. Thank you so much.
And then Dr. Rodriguez.
Yeah, good morning. I'm very happy to be here. My name is Dr. Rodriguez, a proud principal of Canoga Park High School. Thank you, Councilman Bloomingfield, for having us here, and for everyone also. Canoga Park High School is one of the largest comprehensive public high schools in the valley, west of Reseda. I think it's like the only public school left in the area. And we're very proud to be able to afford students equitable education on science, STEM, math, and also environmental science, agriculture, and international business, trade, and also foreign language. So thank you again for this recognition today. We're very thankful to you. Thank you.
All right, let's give it up for Canoga Park High School. We'll do a photo right here.
Mr. Bloomingfield, before you lead the chair there, Mr. President, I just want to stand for Canoga Park. And how'd you guys do last night? Did you play last night?
We played today.
Did you play today? All right, good luck today. So 100th anniversary, 100th, oh, that's a good outside. Very exciting.
The clash of the 100-year titans.
But I just wanted to rise to salute the captain of the team, and the head cheerleader, the drum major, and all the extras. The extras that you provide spirit to the school. Very proud that the Bell and Calabasas Creek come together there, Bob, and the work that you've done. And Mr. Zein certainly did his account, so in the new walkway, one of my dreams, and you talked to Dr. King, but of many dreams, is to get the bike way on the Los Angeles River from Canoga Park High all the way through Los Angeles to Long Beach. But Mr. Bloomingfield, you're doing a great job saluting people because our history is so important. And I believe Mr. Fuentes will stand up and tell you, San Fernando High is the oldest school. 1896. But you think about it, it was just...
I caricably said West Valley when I made that...
That's all right. But that was the West Valley.
Listen carefully for the qualification.
Bob Wilkinson in his district, I was visiting with him once, that your district that you now represent, the former councilman, it started at Coldwater Canyon and went all the way to the city limits, the whole West Valley from Coldwater. So it's so exciting, but to learn our history and know how special it is. Congratulations, Canoga Park. Good luck tonight to both schools, because I sit next to Ms. Martinez, but I work with Bob as well. Good luck, hunters. Good job.
Congratulations. Let's give them another round of applause.
If I may just add one last thing.
Yes, please.
Our ninth graders and one of our environmental science magnets have designed a headwaters project that is like second to none. So you'll hear about it because we've already given the information to our councilmen. So that's gonna really benefit the entire area of the West Valley.
Wonderful. And thank you for your service, sir.
Sorry. Well, one more thing. I would like to invite everyone to our centennial celebration taking place next week. It's on Saturday, the 11th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We're gonna have a car show, like a bunch of fun activities all around campus, so please be there and support our hunters.
Give us the date and hours again.
It's on October 11th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Thank you. Mr. Bloomingfield? Great presentation. Okay, so now, it's my mistake. I do have the last general public comment card is Mr. Brian Barajas. Brian, I misplaced the card. I apologize.
So this is my first visit here, so I wanted to make a statement, and I think it pertains to everyone here. Let's take a look at Argentina's president, Cristina Fernandez de Kirchner. She made a comment, explicit comment, that if she was to be assassinated, it would be coming from the United States. And that's a terrible statement, even though it is true. Obama has represented a puppet, but past that, a supporter of the Roman Empire system. He has to be thrown out immediately. The progress which, the progress which South Latin America is pushing for thermonuclear civil uses of technology, it puts the question before the American people. We are moving towards nuclear power. Forget about the Grieve movement. This system is collapsing, and we're facing thermonuclear World War III. What are we going to do? Throw Obama out.
Okay, that concludes... Okay, that concludes general public comment. We're gonna go to item four. Mr. Price, would you like me, I, we have cards, would, okay, then I will take the cards first, again, one minute, and I will start out. We're visited today by one of our colleagues on LAUSD, Mr. Steve Zimmer. Steve, please come to the podium. All right, no applause.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, and I just wanted to come today on behalf of my colleagues. We will be taking up a support measure on the 14th related to Proposition 47. I just wanted to let my friends and colleagues know on the council how important this is for our students in LAUSD. We have taken, under your colleague, Ms. Neary Martinez, and leadership, and, and leadership of, of others of us on the school board, a nation-leading position as it relates to redefining school climates, re-decriminalizing our youth. Proposition 47 will give us the ability to not only have a state law come in line with what we are trying to do in our schools, it will also very, very critically provide funding, redirect funding away from incarceration to the programs like restorative justice that we have been able to show really work for our kids. And I want to encourage you to support and to unanimously support Mr. Price's motion. It's important that all of, all of us who come into contact with our kids have a united voice that raises hope, reduces unnecessary decriminalization, and very importantly, provides the pathway for investment for the, for the, for the measures that we are trying to lead with in LAUSD. I thank you for your time, and, and I urge your support.
Thank you. So, Mr. Labange?
Wanted to thank Mr. Zimmer. Last night, Mr. O'Farrell and I were there in your fine deputy for the new field at Hollywood High School and the new lights, and know what a special it is, and also I know how you did a good thing of that. And also, I wanted to stand to thank John DC for the work he does for Los Angeles, and I hope he continues to help the schools of Los Angeles, so if you could take that.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Tom.
Okay, I, I, I believe it's Ronnie Norula Woods, Saquon Baldwin, and Lenore Anderson. Are you here? Okay, well, you go first.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Happy Friday. Uh, my name is Ronnie Norula Woods, and I am the Deputy Political Director at the LA County Federation of Labor. Today, I have the honor of standing before you to represent Maria Lina Dorazo and hundreds of thousands of working families who support Proposition 47. As a result of Proposition 47's passage, much-needed resources will be allocated to proactive preventative measures, including the early intervention program. This reform plan is an investment in education and is supported by law enforcement and teachers, grocery workers, and government employees. Given the rapidly growing cost of incarceration on government, this proposition's passage will result in a significant savings to local government. We, the House of Labor, are committed to working with the city throughout the implementation process and hope you will stand with the community members in supporting Proposition 47. Thank you for your time, and as always, for your service.
Thank you. So again, well, I see Daniel, Daniel come up. I'm looking for Saquon Baldwin, are you here? Oh, well then, come get in line behind, and then if I could get, uh, Lenore or Lenora Anderson. Daniel, go ahead.
Thank you, I hope I can get in the same amount of time as the first speaker. Uh, in today's Sacramento Bee, by the Sacramento County DA, the Sacramento County Sheriff, and the Citrus Heights Police Chief, uh, they say that Prop 47 would turn criminals loose. And one thing that it does, that nobody has said so far, you proclaim to be pro-women, it severely decreases the penalty for possession of methamphetamine, heroin, and GHB, which is the date rape drug. So how about talking about that when you say that you're pro-women? How about what this Prop 47 does to drugs, reducing the penalty for possessing GHB, a date rape drug? And you support the reduction of the penalty for that? About identity theft, about forgery? And in this article says that it's a cheap political trick designed to con voters into thinking schools and students would be showered with the money saved by releasing felons into your neighborhood. You're not pro-women if you support this proposition.
Thank you. So Mr. Baldwin, and then hopefully I have, uh, Ms. Anderson, followed by Donna Pierman. Yes, sir?
Hello, everyone. My name is Saquon Baldwin. I'm here asking for your support on Proposition 47. I wanna read you three statistics about, I'm sorry, uh, 1,393,935,000 number of people are in prison in 2012. 52,440, the number of people in California that have in prison in 2012 is, had same incarceration rates and crime with similarity laws in 1960. People are out here struggling, trying to feed their families and don't, oh, people are, are here struggling, trying to feed their families, and they don't have the fair chance because they have the fair, they don't have a fair chance because they have chosen between working and finding ways to make a living.
Thank you so much, young man, for coming down. If you could come, and after you again, Donna Pierman and Marion Fogler. Yes, state your name for the record.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Lenore Anderson. I'm the Executive Director of Californians for Safety and Justice and the Director of Vote Safe, the sponsor of Proposition 47. First, I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Price for your leadership in introducing this motion, as well as your leadership on this issue generally. Uh, I wanna talk to you a little bit about Proposition 47. I, I'm a former prosecutor from the San Francisco District Attorney's Office, as well as a former director of public safety from the city of Oakland. Proposition 47 is about rebalancing our state's priorities to more effectively invest in strategies to stop the cycle of crime. The measure enjoys broad support. You've already heard a little of that support today. It's also supported by law enforcement and victims from across the state, as well as the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce. The initiative does two things. First, it takes six low-level, nonviolent, non-serious crimes and changes them from felony status to misdemeanor punishment. Uh, the second thing it does is it takes the prison spending savings that will generate and invests it into local programs.
Could you stay around in case we have a question for you?
Absolutely, I just wanted to-
I can't do that, then I have to do it for everybody.
That's, uh, I have a letter from the Chamber of Commerce here that I want to share.
Sergeants, I'll take that.
Great.
Okay, Donna, Marion, followed by Candido.
Yeah, I wanna say that I'm against Number 47. These are not victimless crimes. Just, uh, when, when you got date rape and you have identity theft, it really is a big thing to have your identity stolen by somebody else and have your credit, uh, credit, uh, destroyed. These are not victimless crimes, and there's things on here where they got, a person points a gun at somebody who steals them, and now all of a sudden, we now have to think only of the criminal, we can't think about the person that was, uh, the victim. So you really have to look at these things. I bet there's a lot on this measure that shouldn't be on there, that these are not victimless crimes, these are people that are being affected, and we can't just think about overcrowding in jails, we have to think about the people out there. And we need to bring back video conferencing, I'm sorry, because we should've had more than one minute. Thank you.
Okay, Marion, followed by Candido.
You're restricting our right of free speech, First Amendment, just like you're limiting the Second Amendment. Let me tell you something, that's what you're doing. You're finding a loophole to let out criminals who should be serving time in prison and, and get, let them get off easy, like, you know, just a slap on the wrist. You can't do that. It's either a person is nonviolent or a person is violent. You can't just say, well, they did a little violence, so maybe we can just reform them. And that's not possible, because, um, once they really assault somebody, that's it, you know, you just can't just say, well, that, they can go to school and learn how to behave and, and come out to be like flying colors. So it doesn't work that way. Uh, just like the contractor that was next to Obama, and thank God he didn't hurt the Obama, but I love him to live what he's doing to our country, it's horrible. And the voters should hear what is going on on Prop 47's vote no.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, Candido. I'd like to take Marion with me to, uh, to the state penitentiary this weekend, where you'll see children, young people who did make mistakes, who are looking for a second chance. We can't give up on these kids, and our first prevention has to be family, but then the schools, I've known Mr. Steve Zimmer for many years, we worked on the Cup Committee back in, from 1992, and there's nobody, nobody that cares and understands the way, uh, parents who are, who have children that are having problems. So, Mr. President, I hope that we support this fully, and Marion, please, I'd like to take you, so you'll see some children who have made mistakes, who are changing their lives all the time.
Thank you. Okay, if I could have Wana Kala, followed by Mr. Herman.
Well, uh, prison is not really a way to provide housing for anyone.
You gotta stay on the subject.
Yeah, that's the subject. Uh, those, these prisoners being released, um, uh, some of them might reform, and some others might not. So what are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? Huh? Create housing for everyone?
Thank you, you, you won't stay on subject.
No, you won't have criminals.
No sergeants, these, I mean, I'm gonna enforce that, stay on subject. When you come here, come prepared. Mr. Herman?
We are prepared, and the bottom line is, is, we do not support Item 47. It is unreasonable to support an item that endangers the public, our society, so insensitive of every 15 members, Mr., Corretts is not even listening, but the bottom line is this, Proposition 47 turns the idea on its head, and all of you take responsibility on that with little accountability and little concern for the public. Support Batman, support us, Los Angeles, say no to Proposition 47, for it is an illegal action of your rights and the Constitution, and vote for Nick Cuscorri, keep your last seconds, you moron.
You're off the subject. All right. Mr. Price? And if I could get Mr. Labange? Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, colleagues, colleagues, we have an incarceration crisis.
Hold on, Mr. Sergeants, we're having disruptions from the usual suspects. They may need assistance finding the, uh, the stairwell or the elevator.
Send a padded, padded stairwell.
Mr. Price, we're back to you.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Colleagues, we have an incarceration crisis in our state, one that disproportionately impacts communities of color, like the one that I represent. I find it criminal that while we spend just $8,500 to educate our state's children, we spend $47,000 a year to incarcerate someone. That's why I introduced this resolution to support Prop 47, the Safe Neighborhoods and Schools Act, on the November ballot. Uh, Prop 47 would cha, would change six of the lowest-level nonviolent crimes, such as simple drug possession and shoplifting under $950, from a felony to misdemeanors, charges that disproportionately impact women and people of color. If passed, the state's Legislative Analyst Office has said that the annual savings created would be in the low hundreds of millions of dollars. Those savings would then be spent, could then be spent on truancy prevention, mental health, and substance abuse treatment, and victim services, programs that research has shown increases public safety. The list of supporters for Prop 47 grows daily. Former San Diego Police Chief William Landstone, San Francisco District Attorney George Gascon, Santa Clara District Attorney Jeff Rosen, the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce, and the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, just to name a few. Let's add the city of Los Angeles's name to this list, and I ask, respectfully ask for your I-vote.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a major step towards us ruining fewer lives in the state of California. There are any number of people that, whose lives have literally been ruined by being charged with a felony for stealing a pair of socks or a piece of pizza, and often these even wind up being third strikes and require incredibly extensive, uh, stays in prison at our expense and without great necessity. Instead, we can save hundreds of millions of dollars. Hopefully, that money gets directed to drug treatments and other things to help get people off this cycle, but we have to get nonviolent criminals out of our overflowing state systems. It's absolutely ridiculous that in the last 30 years or so, we've built one university and 22 new state prisons. This has to change, and this is a major step in the right direction to do that.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. I'd just like to, uh, give a major rebuttal on some of the things that were said earlier. I think one of the things, if you followed the penal code in the state of California, you realize that it is a living document that's been developed over years with the legislative process and also the judicial process. Uh, this initiative of Proposition 47 actually moves forward to dismantle a large segment of that work over the last several decades. Just to give you a couple of things that I think are important to look at, even the most ardent supporters of Prop 47 say at a minimum, 10,000 prisoners will be released from state prison. They also identify that the resentencing hearings, which are the early-release vehicle for Prop 47, will exclude input from both the district attorney and, uh, victims. They also changed the terminology of what dangerousness is as it relates to the resentencing hearings, in which they've created terminology that makes it almost impossible to reach that threshold. When you look at the crimes that are limited as it relates to, uh, using as an example for, uh, future, uh, elements, is for sexual violent crimes, murder, certain sex crimes with children, uh, solicitation of murder, assault with a machine gun on a police officer. These are the crimes that they use as an example that will get additional penalties. But what they have ignored are such crimes, such as carjacking, armed robbery, assault on peace officers with other weapons, most felonies which the defendant personally uses a firearm, assault with a deadly weapon, bank robbery, residential burglary, just to name a few. Also, if you look at 47, they also, they've narrowed the definition of dangerousness, which really, uh, ties the hands of the court to determine whether a person that's in custody should be released. And when you look at the issues of dealing with these court decisions, the discretion of the judge is almost evaporated. The proposed new definition of dangerousness is not limited only to the type of offense serving terms in, uh, for crimes affected by the act, but it applies to any resentencing permitted by the penal code. When we go through, and these are maybe changes that were, uh, issues that were unintended, but I think what you'll see immediately is that it violates at least the constitutional rights of victims when you do not allow the DA or the victim to come to sentencing hearings. The Marcy Law requires that the victim be given notice, uh, as to hearings about their particular case. This also eliminates, to a great degree, our drug treatment programs of drug courts, and also the proposition a while back that allowed people to go through, uh, particular diversion programs before going to state prison. There's no longer a need to look at these diversion programs if the penalty is gonna be six months, and yet you're offering them a diversion program that may take 18 months. One of those that is also very important to look at, because of the issue of cutting all thefts for $950 or less, you pretty well eliminated filing a felony on any firearm that has been purchased, or, or firearm that's been stolen. And so therefore, uh, any handgun would fit that criteria, that would be a misdemeanor. So no longer could you have that as a theft of a firearm- So, no longer could you have that as a theft of a firearm used as a prior felony in future filing of cases. You also find that in dealing with misdemeanors, you have cut out a good deal of crime that addresses businesses, and those cases such as theft, forgery, and a number of things. So, if you can follow this scenario, you will find that a person, that a person that has a prior conviction of robbery and uses a firearm and who steals a gun less than $900 can only be charged with a misdemeanor. Or a person with a prior conviction for residential burglary who forges the victim's personal checks for less than $950 can be charged only with a misdemeanor.
If you could check your time, Mr. Parks.
Okay, let me, I'll wrap it up. Under Prop 47, persons with prior convictions for stalking would only, can still only be charged with a misdemeanor possessing date rape drugs. The last two comments I'll make is, one of the speakers talked about, is dealing with the issue of the three rape drugs, that you no longer will be under the felony charges. And there's a number, and I'll push my button again, but there's a number of other issues that appear.
I'll push your button again, so you could get your thoughts together, and, because we've got another speaker, since you're going to push it again.
Okay. Let me just say finally that, well, I'll push you, but the unfunded mandate issue is also a problem.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to thank Mr. Price and the others who brought this to our attention, and Mr. Zimmer for coming out here. And I know the school board and the school district and school districts throughout the state are going to be thrilled to know that we often hear vaguely about the need to invest more in education and less in our prison systems. And this is a resolution that is going counter to a trend that we have had for decades in this state, where we resolve a lot of our issues by building more prisons and investing less in our education. Yes, this is not perfect, but I think that this will go a long way in beginning to and continue to have that discussion about how's countering that trend. I was a bit concerned as well when I read that 10,000 inmates may be released and put into our streets. And in fact, Skid Row, after realignment, had a number of new individuals come into that area without proper care and attention to drive, put them in rehabilitation programs or give them the care they need. All we did was throw them out to Skid Row and ask them to survive. In this instance, I see that each individual, should they be released, will require a thorough risk assessment and review about their criminal history prior to resentencing, if at all. So, it's not an automatic release. Each individual will be assessed, and I'm hoping that we do do the assessment so that violent criminals are kept behind bars, but that we do do an assessment that if some of these individuals do need a second chance, as Mr. Candido, as Candido said, that that will be provided to them and with support when they are released and not just simply released to our streets on Skid Row. I ask for your support on this.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Price to close.
Yeah. Mr. Weezer, I appreciate you making the comment about the reassessment, but I think if you read that literature, you'll find that that reassessment is very narrowly focused on the potential of you violating a very specific number of charges, not the entire penal code. The other issue, and I'll just reemphasize the issue, and I don't know how many of us would like to confront, as the speaker said earlier, women's groups when they know you've, all those hard-fought laws to bring rape drugs into the felony arena are now under the category of misdemeanors as any other drug that we're dealing with. The issue of dealing with handguns, I just don't think we could ignore it in the fact that we've had success in this city with homicides going down, but the theft of guns is a major issue of how violence occurs in our city, and to make it a misdemeanor because of the price of the gun, not the damage that it does, is something that I think clearly puts this on an issue of saying we should not support it. When we look at the business community, the proposal limits burglary, forgery, petty theft, grand theft, and possession of stolen property as misdemeanors, irrespective of the number of prior theft convictions. The loss, any loss lower than $950 is essentially decriminalizing these crimes. And so, you have a variety of scenarios that I mentioned earlier, where a person, because of the price of the weapon that they, or the price of the property that they particularly stole, they would not be eligible for anything but a misdemeanor, even though there are these major cases in their particular background. And then, the last couple of comments in dealing with the felonies that are excluded, I mentioned some of them, from the serious crimes, a carjacking, an armed robbery, bank robbery, and then this issue of savings. There's nothing in this initiative that tells you how these savings are going to be accrued, and there's nothing in the sense of saying how, they list specifically how it's going to be spent, but I think what you're going to find, just like they did in realignment of our prison system, many of these costs are going to be pushed to the county and the city, where county jails will absorb most of what the prison system does today. And I think when you look at all the negatives, this is generally not the way to deal with public policies on dealing with propositions, particularly one this broad in which it is overturning many of the hard-fought battles of the penal code.
Mr. Parks, thank you. Mr. Price is next.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues, for your, for your comments and certainly well-thought concerns. The fact remains, however, that we've had respected law enforcement officials up and down the state have indicated their support for this measure. After reading it closely and understanding clearly what the implications are, they support this. As I mentioned before, the Legislative Analysts has indicated that hundreds of millions of dollars could be saved and redirected to programs that more actively, more accurately address these issues and concerns. But I think it's clear that we have to do something different. This is a positive, progressive move that attempts to really reallocate resources and use them as they are necessary and are needed. So, I, again, ask for your support on this measure. But, Mr. President, we have the proponent here to answer any questions, if there are some that the members may still have.
I think if members have any questions, they haven't pushed the button, so I think we're okay, Mr. Price.
Well, I would deny vote.
Okay. See any other speakers on the queue? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, two noes.
Very good. Okay. It's approved, says the city attorney. Next item.
Council has motions for postno-referral.
So ordered. Next item.
That clears the desk.
Clears the desk. Any announcements? Big football game tonight between Canoga Park and Van Nuys, that'll be very exciting. Thank you, Mr. Blumenthal and Ms. Martinez, for honoring them today. The other announcement that I have, there'll be a very big game this afternoon in Allegiant Park, and make sure that, take public transit if you can. In addition, tomorrow be a great day for athletics in Southern California. USC, UCLA both have games at the same time or near the same hour, starting at 4:30 at USC, 7:30 at the Rose Bowl. And also, Elton John's going to be downtown playing away, and the Dodgers will be there. So, if you get a chance, as a former board member, I encourage you to take the MTA, as a current board member would say. Mr. Blumenthal?
Great. I have an announcement. Today is the last day of Eric Rodriguez, who is on my staff.
No, it's not the last day of Eric Rodriguez, it's just the last day he's going to work for you.
Not the last day of-
Okay, I had to correct you.
He's dead to me now. He's, you know, no, I'm kidding. He's very much alive to me now. He's been with me for five years. He started as an intern, come out, kind of, Eric, and he's been a fantastic staff member, working with me in the Assembly. He's been, he's been stolen by the private sector, you know, after working for me many years, but, you know, birds got to fly, we got to let him get out there and do other things, but he's been, he's been a fantastic member of my team. We had a nice little celebration for him yesterday, and I just wanted to announce that fact and announce that he is a fantastic person and that this is his last day with me as a council member, but he'll always be part of Team Blumenthal.
Good, very good. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much. Bob, I'm glad to say you've allowed your staff member to keep, former staff member to keep living, so thank you so much. And I just want to announce that Saturday, we are having one of the largest outdoor music festivals in the city, free outdoor music festivals. The Egerock Music Festival is happening in Egerock and Calaboto Boulevard. Invite all of you in the public to come out. Lots of great music, food, and arts from northeast L.A. And I don't know if you announced this, Mr. Labonge, but Ciclevia on Sunday, happening through the streets of Echo Park, downtown L.A., Bull Heights, and for the first time ever, going into unincorporated East L.A. Kickoff is at Cinco Puntos on the county-city border on Deanna, Lorena, and Cesar Chavez. So, Ciclevia this Sunday.
Great, and it's a big heat wave coming through, and drink a lot of water, stay in the shade, and be careful, and fire protection for all. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I look forward to seeing you all at Ciclevia, but we should bring lots of water and hydrate while we're riding our bikes. Tomorrow morning at Glassell Park Community Garden, there is what is called the Big Draw, working with children and community members on art at the garden. There's also a tree giveaway that you can plant once the heat wave ends, and we head into real fall weather. Also, and that's at 10 o'clock, at 10 o'clock at the Drew Street Community Garden in Glassell Park, 3304 Drew Street. We also have the Derby Dolls Sixth Annual Community Health Fair from, let's see, it begins at 12 noon and goes into the mid-afternoon. It's at 1910 West Temple. It's really a wonderful event for the family, health screenings, et cetera. And also, tomorrow evening, it's the end-of-the-summer movie night at the lake, at Echo Park Lake, and we are screening Billy Wilder's classic Sunset Boulevard. And we have a fun little sort of pre-screen short to go before the movie starts. And all weekend long, we have the Festival of Philippine Arts and Culture that was at Grand Park in downtown, both Saturday and Sunday during the daytime hours. So, if you're riding Ciclevia, stop by the festival and enjoy some Philippine culture, and have a great weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Mr. President, thank you. I want to invite volunteers to come out tomorrow morning to the Sun Valley Neighborhood Pride Day, starts at 8 o'clock, and we're going to be partnering with the Neighborhood Housing Services of Los Angeles County. We need volunteers to help us with exterior house painting and planting, and flower planting, graffiti removal, and cleanup. We're going to be meeting at 7717 Bachman Avenue in Sun Valley. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Any adjourning motions? See no adjourning motions. Let's continue to serve the city well, have a safe weekend, and be protective of heat. We thank our clerks, our sergeants, and staff. This meeting's adjourned.